Welcome to our meeting, our public meeting of the City of Solidad Successor Agency Housing Authority Special Meeting of Wednesday, January 11, 2023. Thank you everyone who's joining us tonight, those that are here with us and our staff that's in the chamber and then those that are joining us either via Zoom tonight as well. So just a couple of announcements before we begin about public, how the public can participate in these, in tonight's meeting. You have several options to make public comments. You can join the meeting via Zoom, the meeting ID is located on the agenda and for today it's 890-8177-4715. You can also join us via telephone at 1669-900-6833. And the meeting has also been streamed live via Facebook. Please note just in, in terms of the comments on Facebook, if you want to make public comments, your public comments will not be recorded. You would have to join our Zoom meeting to make sure that those get on the record for, for this meeting for today. And let me just say this, we don't have a translator for today, so, oh, you do, okay, perfect, perfect, thank you, thank you so much. Okay, so with that, I think those are all our announcements, so if we can get roll copies and I call this meeting to order at 6:03.
Mayor Velasquez?
Here.
Mayor Protan Jimenez?
Here.
Councilmember Gavas?
Here.
Councilmember Corleone?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yeah.
Okay, so at this time they will move on to our public comments on closed session items. And so at this time, any member of the public may address the council on items appearing on the closed session item. On closed session items appearing on the agenda, please note that you do have three minutes and please be brief and to the point. So for today, we do have one item in our closed session. And that's a city council releases to closed session to consider personnel matters pursuant to government code section 549 by 7B1, city manager recruitment. So at this time, are there any members of the public that like to make comments? And I will go with members that are joining us via Zoom. Okay, so C9, and I don't think there's any members that are public here either. So at this point then we will, we will go into closed session and we'll reconvene the public person of the meeting at 6:30. Thank you.
Great, thank you everyone. So we are now reconvening from our closed session. And I will turn it over to our city attorney, or city manager, to be able to do our our city attorney. To our city attorney to do a report out on item number one.
Yes, mayor and council and constituents, the city council in closed session reviewed a number of components and issues related to recruitment materials and provided input and no other reportable action was taken.
Thank you. So at this time then we'll move into our pledge of allegiance and if we can all rise please for the pledge of allegiance. And I will ask one of our city employees, Alex, to, he can lead us on the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Puerto Rico.
So we'll move on now on the next item on the agenda, which is additions and modifications to the agenda. And we do have two additions and modifications to the agenda. One, we do have a, an item we want to add, which is the declaration of emergency due to the winter storms. And the other item is asking the council if it'd be possible for our two items that are under our presentation. Sorry, let me. Our council presentations, thank you. The two items that are under our council presentation, if we can defer those to the next meeting on our agenda, just due to wanting to make sure we get through the business that we have for today, but also due to some of the winter storms and some of the oversight for tonight in terms of the Salinas River, want to make sure that our team that's here, that's also part of Monterey County's ELC, that they have the ability to be able to continue with the important work to be able to maintain our cities safe. So council, we're in agreement with that, would it be possible?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, yes, we do. Okay.
So, so we'll go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, mayor, just for clarification, so there's two actions. The, the first action to add the item to the agenda, you need to include findings pursuant to government section 54954.2, which basically we've run through this process before. Where you can add an item to the agenda when you, there's a need to take immediate action. And when that need arose after the agenda was posted, staff can represent to you that that is indeed the case with the resolution that you are proposing to add, which is to ratify the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. That needs a formal action and vote of the council. The other item is sort of at the discretion of the mayor to with the consensus of the council, that doesn't require a formal action. If you decide you're just going to defer the council presentations to the next meeting, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you for that. So let me take on the second one first. So council, that's the recommendation, are we in agreement that we can table the presentations for next week? I mean, for the next city council?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. And then on the emergency proclamation, then we do have a motion on the floor. So we have a motion by council member Cabrera, we have a second by Mayor Potem Jimenez.
And that, that motion, and that motion incorporates the, the two findings that I had just stated, correct?
Correct.
All right, good.
Okay, so my only question on that, Mike, is where does that go on the agenda?
It's up to, it's up to you, wherever you want to place that item on the agenda.
Okay, so you have it under B5 as part of our packet, so we'll keep it under B5.
Uh, yeah, the only, the only question is if you wanted the participation from folks who are there at the meeting now, like the fire chief or the police chief. And while you still have access to them, we might want to move it to the front end of the agenda so that we can do that, but whatever your preference.
Yeah, absolutely. So let's move it up to the first business item, so that'll become B1.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so do we have a motion? Oh wait, so we did. So.
Just need a vote.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for walking us through. Okay, so before we move on to public comments, I do want to just have the council, if we can take a moment of silence before we go into the public comment section and obviously as we know, not just our county here, but the entire state of California has been impacted by the winter storms that have been here since the end of December. And so I'd like to take a moment of silence to be able to just let all of our residents know in the state of California and also for the 17 people that have been so far due to this atmospheric river event. You know, our thoughts and our prayers are with all the families that have been impacted in all of our cities. So if we can just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you so much. And I also want to thank our first responders that have been extremely critical to keeping our community safe. So thank you so much. So we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our public comment. So at this time, any member of the public that wants to address the city council on items that are appearing, not appearing on the agenda and items of interest to the public that are within the jurisdiction of the council, have the opportunity to be able to speak. So we have three minutes, please, and if you can be brief and to the point and when you, if you would like to speak on your, on Zoom, if you can please raise your hand so we can recognize you and unmute you. And if you can state your name also for the record, that would be great. And so at this time, I will open it up for public comments. Okay, we have no members that are joining us here in our chambers. Do we have anyone in Zoom that'd like to make a public comment? Okay, I'm seeing none. So we will go ahead and close the public comment portion of our meeting and we'll go into the council presentations are, will be deferred to the next council meeting. And we'll go into our consent calendar for today. We have seven, six items on our consent calendar. And I would like to pull, so let me go back, any members of the council want to pull item, an item on the consent calendar for further discussion or comment or clarification. Okay, I'd like to pull item C5 and C6 to be able to have a presentation from our staff on those. Okay, let me take it out to the public. Any member of our public wants to pull any items before us on the consent calendar? Okay, seen none. Then I will bring it back to council for approval of item C dash one to C dash four.
So, second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries unanimously. So I will turn this over to Mr. Alex, who is going to be able to provide us a presentation on item C dash five and C dash six.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members, good afternoon, everyone who are in the technical chambers and to everyone joining us online, using Facebook. So as mayor said, I will be presenting consent item number C dash five, which is regarding agreement for construction services with Modesto Executive Electric Incorporated for the Gerardo Field Park, as well as Blasantana Park Land for Projects and authorizing the city manager to set agreement on the behalf of the city of Salada and the amount of $176,000. So a little brief summary here, in 2016, Gerardo used to be one giant baseball slash softball field. It was then designed to incorporate three smaller fields and each respective field to get their home respective sports lighting from Moscow, which is unanimously rated across the nation as the number one sports light. So in doing so and going into 2017, when the project was on its way, we noticed that we weren't going to have the budget to provide field three with the sports lighting that it needed. And we nevertheless went ahead, did the project, prepared it, and everything was still ready to go. So for the time that it came to install the lights, we didn't have to do anything else other than to install lights. We held off because under my understanding, we were also holding out so we can double up and provide glass antenna for sliding and hopefully get a more cost effective value for purchasing these lights. We went ahead and did a formal bid, purchased them, had them delivered to the city as all that. And we are ready to go ahead and install them. And this is why we're presenting this resolution number 5908 to you. I do also want to mention that we anticipated project schedule come on H2. Unfortunately, because of the council meeting being delayed a week, everything here is also a stretch of a week perspective. And I will be opening the floor to questions.
Thank you, Alex, for that. Council, any comments or questions for Alex?
No. I have no questions. I do have a comment whenever we're ready to do this.
So if there's no questions, I just have a quick question on that. I know you guys went through the bidding process, but there was only one contractor that submitted the bids right from Modesto. So with, with that, in terms of our municipal code and what our public contracting code, we can go ahead and issue or award the contract even with just one contractor that submitted that bid, kind of a competitive bidding process?
From my understanding, Don can probably correct me if I'm misunderstanding here, but we are supposed to put out a small bid and if no one bids it, in this case someone did, you usually go with the lowest possible bid. In this case it was one, but let's say for example, there wasn't. Then at that point, we attempted the formal bidding process and then we can go ahead and contact you know, contractors that we may know who are equipped to do something like this.
Okay, that, that is correct. That's, that's the legal standard. If you put it out to bid, you don't receive any bids, then you are free to dispense with the bidding process and commence negotiations directly with contractors of your choice.
Okay, so because we received one bid, that's, that, we go with that. Okay, got it. Thank you for clarifying. That was my only question. Yeah, thank you. So there, there's no other questions or comments. So council member Chavez?
You know, my, my only comment is just it's been so long that we've been wanting to do this. I'm glad that we finally are able to move this ahead. I know that there was already, I think, one tournament this, this past year, or maybe two tournaments this past year over at Galardo. And I think this gives an opportunity for more tournaments to happen. I think that was the dream originally. When this whole process started before, 2016 years before that, of when it was starting to be developed to do this as a complex for tournaments and for our community. And so I'm glad to see that also specifically to you know, when we talk about Blasantana, Blasantana, we've had for years where our football teams, our soccer teams have had to borrow equipment to put lights during the fall and into the winter to be able to practice because it gets so dark. We've had at times where we've had vehicles park up all the way up to the burns of the park so that they put their lights on for an hour, hour and a half. And then they're over there jump starting their cars because their, their, their cars went dead. So we've had all kinds of different ways of trying to light those, those, that park. So I'm glad to see finally that we're moving forward. And so this is a great day for, for our community of Salada.
Yeah, thank you for those, yeah, thank you for those comments.
One more comment? Yeah, I, I remember seeing that, all the people with the car. We do that with soccer because we don't have places to practice after four. So if you guys can focus now on other sports that we can help as well.
Well, that, that's going to be a blessing.
Yeah, at the pit.
So the contract incorporates both.
Yeah, thank you, Alex. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so it's going to be both, which is really nice to see. And I think for me, just some of the other elements that were included as part of this contract is the flashing lights. I would say, what is, yes, LED light show. And I think that as council member Chavez said, that's pretty incredible to be able to have that. And as we're growing, as our community is growing, to be able to, to see that we can as we're growing, as our community is growing, to be able to to see that we can provide these kind of opportunities and have these kind of, you know, amenities that you typically would see in bigger cities. So it's really nice to see that in preparation. I know it was an additive alternate, but it was nice to be able to have that. So thank you for that. So let me take it up to our members of the public in case there's any members of the public that want to make comments on item C dash five. Okay, I'll take it up to Zoom. If there are any members of our public. Okay, we'll see then. Then I'll bring it back. So if there's no further comments or questions, then we'll go on to item C dash six.
So C dash six is the resolution for the city council of the city is approving the agreement for construction services with N R Development Incorporated for the installation of the AD restroom building and the site furnishings for the Caesar Charles Park profit and authorizing the city manager to execute the set agreement on the behalf of the city of solid and the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-five cents. So little brief background for this one, a public restroom for Caesar Travis has been something that's been long requested on the behalf of the council and the downtown business areas. We all know that Caesar Travis in this downtown area is a focal point. And by throwing the AD it helps not only make it a focal point, but hopefully attract visitors from the parking stations. When we originally brought this, we made an agreement with council to take on or rather an agreement contract with B F S Landscape Architects so they can help with design the the Caesar Charles Park and include also amenities. We made a formal bid to take out the the container. We got bids for it. Purchased it. And actually, we recently got contacted by the vendor and they offered us a really sweet deal on essentially a container that meets our standards, meets our needs, exactly what we asked them at a reduced price of five thousand dollars. So it was really great to hear. Not only that, but of course, we also included within this staff report, the attachment of the site plan. I hope you guys had a chance to look at. And we will be going forward with the installation of the restroom building and the site furnishings. And this is what I essentially have here for this resolution. Once again, I do want to make the point that this also has anticipated a project schedule on the second page. And once again, as we push back a week accordingly for the for the week that we missed here at the council meeting last week.
Thank you, Alex, for clarifying those timelines. I'll bring it back to council. Council, are there any questions? Questions first and not like any comments. Any questions for Alex? I have a question, Alex, really quick. I know that it doesn't include the utilities, water, sewer and electric utilities. So those are going to be additional costs. And my only question was, why were they not wrapped up? Is it just we're just doing the installation? And then what is the cost? I know it says that it could be done by staff. Are we going to contract it out? So just kind of, why wouldn't it be wrapped up into the this portion of the contract?
Yeah, great question there. Hopefully, if you don't mind backing me up here. I remember when we spoke about the installation of the sewer and utilities associated with the container. I know that we discussed the ideas of possibly even incorporating, believe the contractor was. Yeah, for Dixie, I think Anderson Pacific or to hopefully, you know, help us and get that utility off of the area like that. We also discussed the idea of having a sewer line hopefully tying in across that empty lot and having these these was sort of looking for ideas for the future to also incorporate the container.
The container village.
The container village that will probably going up. It's things that we we put aside. So we hopefully can incorporate it all into one big project and hopefully even save, you know, something like costs and these other options. But yeah.
So so just to clarify, then if you're gonna wrap it up into another project, once you put it, install it, we're gonna have to wait until all the utilities are replaced to be for it to be usable?
Yes.
Right? Because then that's gonna take longer, right? We're doing a contract now. But I think, you know, obviously, we wanted to make sure that that was my question. It just didn't didn't seem logical.
Yeah. Understandable. Yeah, we do. We will have this container hopefully delivered sometime soon, but it is something that's eventually gonna have to be set apart at a later time. We still have to prep the groundwork, the ground layers to actually have it installed and things like that. So we're looking at maybe, you know, sometime at the time of March is when these things are starting to wrap up. And hopefully, we have an answer to get back to you on how we're planning to approach it and wrap it all up together actually see how we're gonna go about doing the process.
Okay, so we have a timeline and then to install and then for it to actually function will be at a later time.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, if we can follow up on that and come back to to that, please. Okay, those were my own questions. Council, let's open it up for any comments.
Okay. And yes, to the chat, I was just wondering, it's the reason that I guess it's a question. Okay, thank you. And yeah, so I was just wondering, is the reason that we're giving them now, purchasing them now due to like maybe a deadline on us utilizing the funds that we're using to prepare the patterns?
That's a great question. Now, councilor, I know one of the reasons why we tried to go with the purchase, and although this is one of the reasons, it not necessarily means it is the reason. We're taking advantage of the vendor's price for the for the discount.
Yeah, so five thousand. That's pretty sizable. Okay, and then my my other thing was just the comment. I was just gonna say, I'm really excited to have, you know, the restroom facilities available. We definitely, it sounds like it might be ready around springtime. Hopefully, if they get advantage of the spring travelers.
Yeah.
And, you know, hopefully bring some business and some tax dollars to us and hopefully they come back. So just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can add a comment on the utility. So back when we did the visitor center, as it was then, the gateway center now, we bought the building, had somebody install it, and then staff either performed or contracted the utility of the best. That's what we plan to do with this restroom as well. There's already water on there. That'll be pretty simple. We'll contract and Alex will supervise the construction of the electric. And then we have three options for sewer, whether it's with the container village, we put a pump station in, staff install it and all that, or sewer lateral. But Dixie's supposed to start up here in the next few weeks. We'll get a price from the contractor to do the sewer system for the container village as well as this, see if that's viable or hook up one of the ways vice versa.
Thank you, Don, for that clarification. Okay. Um, so seeing that there's no, if there's no further questions, thank you so much, Alex, for that presentation. Great job.
Hey, John, Alex, thank you.
Good job. So seeing if there's no other comments from our council or no comments from the public, I'll entertain a motion to.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for to approve C five and C six.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, a second by council member Corolejo, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much. And these are two great projects that I know, as council member Chavez said, we've been waiting for a while. So it's very exciting to see them move forward. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda. And today we do have one public, a public hearing number one. And this is a public hearing in regards to SB two implementation actions phase one, and we have three separate ordinances and actions for those. So I will begin the public hearing by receiving a staff report, then we'll open up the public hearing. And then we'll close the public hearing and then it'll come back for council action. So I will turn it over to Adriana.
You can actually, council mayor, I am a assistant fire of the city of Solana. Today, I'll be presenting a staff report to recommend for a high adoption ordinance seven forty-eight. A many provisions entitled seventeen zoning of the municipal code to incorporate new regulations pertaining to allowable uses. And ordinance seven fifty and ordinance of the city council of the city of solid amending section seventeen point zero four point zero three zero definitions of the solid municipal code. And ordinance seven fifty-one, ordinance of the city, the solid act, many provisions of seventeen point thirty-eight point two two zero holds on permanent foundations, all to implement the first phase of SB two and facilitate the streamlining housing, streamlining and acceleration of housing in solid. The first part of this phase one, SB two was presented to you, council, on December seventh. And the material was provided where these amendments will be will allow solid act to comply with SB two mandates from the state in order to help produce more housing, facilitate the permitting process, establish new housing types here in solid and focus on new verbiage and definition relating on affordability. And and other types of housing, another type of housing such as transitional housing. Information was provided in the staff report of the different allowable uses as well as the changes in the new definitions these ordinances will be making in in our municipal code. The city aims to bring forward the most feasible options to help with local housing needs. For this phase one, these zoning amendments, staff is proposing to amend title seventeen to define allowable uses in different core residential areas and help streamline the review process for mobile homes of permanent foundations. During the December seventh meeting, comments were received about the the concern having mobile homes and have not been cohesive with residential areas. And it was proposed that property development standards will still apply, making all the neighborhoods cohesive, meaning the same color, the architectural style as well. So property development standards still apply for any mobile homes that come in on single family lots. Furthermore, it's recommended that city council adopts reports ordinance, ordinance changes on this phase one instead of SB two. And if any comments or any language seems vague or that needs further research to do on that you would like to first have to do, I'm more than happy to get that feedback and bring it forward if need be. Thank you.
Thank you, Adriana, for that report. So let me go ahead. Then at this time, I will open the public hearing and I'll open the public hearing at seven oh one. Let me start, council. Let me go out to the public first and then I'll bring it back to the council for any comments or or recommendations additions to what we have before us. So I'll open it up to any members of the public that are joining us via Zoom that like to comment on our public hearing number one. Okay, seen then. Then I'll bring it back to council for any comments or questions first, or actually, let me take questions first on on public hearing number one. And I'll start, council member here for ten minutes.
Yeah, I could quick question regarding again, and I thought I heard you say that that with the addition of the mobile home units in in the neighborhoods and you're saying they must be consistent with the neighborhood or the type of structure that's in there. So what do that all entail?
That entails architectural styles, so the type of looking and they have, it really depends on that and also the color schemes. Color and presentation is very important to the neighborhood if you're in that cohesive look as well. And the property development standards also apply to the proper placement of the mobile homes. So having the same type of backyard frontage look as well and lock coverage as well too.
Okay, so the structure itself will have some tech of additional facade or 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 so it doesn't look like a trailer?
It should have more of a residential residential look than the trailer. Yes.
Yeah, I would like to see that. Okay. Yeah, and the other comment is that I'm not happy about this. Again, I'm not happy about the state coming down and ending that we have to change or or accept these type of things, just like the A D U as well. Because I think that should be dealt by the communities themselves. Not too happy about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mayor President, council member.
Thank you, through the chair. I kind of had the same question in regards to this, the the same item. So the one clarification that I'm looking for. So for example, when you talk about the property development standards and you talk about, let's say, a, let's say, there's a community that's been built out, and let's say there's five lots that haven't been built out and they decide the folks there that purchase these lots, they decide that they're gonna put in, you know, a mobile home structure, you know, these you know, they're they don't look like trailers anymore. But let's say that that is because of this, they're able to do so. If everything in that particular neighborhood has stucco, would those mobile homes have to have stucco on them? Is that is that what we're saying by following the cohesive property development standards?
We can't regulate the material as long as it's the proper material to be residential unit for it to have. However, we can, I would focus more on the, I guess, yes, on the facade aspect of it, meaning the the color scheme and making sure it's just cohesive on that way. But I'm not too sure on the material exactly for these mobile homes.
I think we wouldn't want to make it an impediment for someone that would want to put a mobile home off, but we would have to work closely with the the proposal to make sure that low as well wouldn't exist in there.
Just curious, because I know I've seen in Gilroy, Morgan Hill, these types of units that are stuck. So they are, I mean, it is, they are done that way. I'm just curious if if this is what we're saying, that it has to be cohesive. I'm just trying to understand what that means exactly. Okay.
So so just to clarification though, because we are looking at approving this and we do have property standards already that are going to be part of the recommendation or approvals for the public hearing so that other elements of conditions that are not included in the property development standards can't be included if we do want them to have. Obviously, I understand that we don't want to have impediments that are going to be a challenge, but would that be a possibility to be able to include that? Or is it separate? Because we have a separate design standard in the property development standards.
Right. So the property development centers, we follow it through the zoning, the actual zoning, residential zoning standard. So that would be a different section we'd be amending. The mobile homes on permanent foundation for this ordinance, we are changing the streamlining process of this. So instead of going back to an architectural review committee, the state is saying we no longer have to give our committee the option to approve or not.
So, so, yes, you can't put it in. Yeah, okay. Thank you, council members. Any other comments?
No, not on my part.
Okay, I have a I do. I have a comment really quick because this is gonna apply to on on this one where it's on page, and I think I think I think it's to properties in our two districts. So I know it has on this one that there's shouldn't have a height greater than two stories. So now with the purchase of the ladder truck and before, obviously, we had impediments of why we couldn't build higher than the two stories. Now that we we're going to possibly have access to that, does it need to be two stories? Can we, is that statutory language in terms of the two stories? Or does it not matter that it doesn't have the three stories that we can now go up to?
From my understanding, the two stories is our local choice. However, I know coming with the general plan, we do have much more opportunity to make a lot of changes, if I'm not wrong, where as as we go through the process, we can definitely amend our code to include that and and bring that forward with the general plan itself.
Okay, so even if we approve this tonight, just to be clear, because now we're potentially, we don't have it today, but we will that we don't, I just want to make sure that we we don't restrict the use of the three stories based on obviously going through the general plan process.
Yeah, the the general plan will offer the the council and the community more densities on properties, vertical heights with the acquisition of the ladder truck. That'll help us meet those arena numbers for units in the community above two stories. So.
Okay, well, there's an opportunity also to do development projects that are more different than what we had, commercial mixed use and also higher densities that will be more pencil out, obviously, for the developers, which we haven't had that option in the past. So, okay, and that was just my only question because I know it's relevant in two different sections where you have that restriction of the two of the the two stories. Okay. And then just my final on supportive housing. So there's a fifty-five year restriction, affordability, recorded affordability restriction. So is that statutory as well or is it choice by the council?
No, that's statutory. It's what it is. That's comes from the state.
Okay, those are all the questions I have. Okay, council. Then since there was no public comments, there's no additional comments from the council. If there's no additional comments, and I know we we have to approve these. Mike, if you can just remind me, I think we have to take each one of these separately, correct? So we can go through the first ordinance and then we'll go through that, each one of them separately. Okay, so then council, I'll make I'll entertain.
That's correct. And so what we need is a motion to adopt wave reading and read by title only for each one of the three ordinances that are before you. wave reading and read by title only for each one of the three ordinances that are before you.
Okay.
So you take them one at a time, but this the with the same motion, motion to adopt wave reading and read by title only.
Okay, perfect. So council, if I can get a motion then to adopt wave the reading and read by title only on ordinance number seven four eight?
I'll make that motion to adopt wave by title only. Uh ordinance number seven four eight, ordinance of the city council, city of Solid Ed, and then uh provisions of Title Seventeen zoning for Solid Ed Municipal Court to incorporate new regulations pertaining to allowable uses.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second by council member Cabrera. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Okay, council, so I'll entertain a motion uh to adopt wave, wave uh reading and read by title only, ordinance number seven fifty. Okay, I will make a motion to adopt and waive the reading, uh waive the reading by title only for ordinance number seven fifty and ordinance of the city council of the city of Solid Ed. Amending provisions of section seventeen point oh four oh point zero three zero definitions of Title Seventeen zoning of the Solid Ed Municipal Code. Do you want to have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by councilor Cabrera, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. So um this is the final one. I will entertain a motion for ordinance number seven five one. Okay, council.
Motion that we uh rate by title only and read uh ordinance seven five one ordinance for the council. City of Solid Ed and many provisions seventeen point three eight two two zero, mobile homes on permanent foundation set of seventeen, and you can repeat that in there. So when you solve the municipal code to the city S P two housing streamlining and celebration.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, so a second by council one Cabrera, all in, I mean, council one Corabejo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you, Ariana, for your work on this.
S P two's been something the city has been working on for number.
And unfortunately, there'll be more faces coming up.
Okay, so we'll go on to our next um our next items on the agenda, and at this time, we have business. Uh our business section and we will, uh there was an amendment for us to take on our consider an adopt resolution of five fifty-nine thirteen ratifying a proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to statewide winter storms atmospheric river. Um that'll be our our item B dash one, and I will turn this over to our interim city manager.
Yeah, yes, the uh the declaration of the every municipality in Monterey County is being asked to pass a declaration. Uh Gonzalez did last night, uh and so for the council uh tonight is a solid ed's opportunity to ask declaration. Again, this assists with the future reimbursements um that that only or cities may need to receive from the events.
Through the, through the chair, just a little bit, through the chair, just a little bit of clarification. So uh the process is the state, actually, the governor declared an emergency on January fourth. Um and by way of that emergency, uh he uh he recognized, um I'm sorry, by way of that declaration, he recognized there's an emergency throughout the state due to these winter storms that we're having flooding. Uh you know, power outages, uh so forth, and so highway closures, so forth and so on. Um usually, the follow-up process uh after that is for individual cities and or counties to then adopt a declar- a proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. And in doing that, you enable your community, your city, whatever, you tap into or be uh able to receive reimbursement for monies you expend in addressing that emergency. And then also you uh open yourself up to receiving assistance from the state and possibly even federal agencies to also deal with the emergency procedure. So yesterday, after the recommendation at a meeting with supervisor Chris Lopez and representatives of O E S and the mayor, some of the mayors from the Monterey County cities. Uh there was a request that all of the cities in Monterey Counties adopt a proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. Um and Brian um as the uh the designated uh I wanted to say the designated guru, but that's probably not the official title. But as the, Brian, as the acting city manager, also served as the city's emergency service director. And he adopted a proclamation that I prepared for him yesterday, uh declaring that there was an emergency, a local emergency in the city of Solid Ed. The law says that after that proclamation has been uh uh issued that the city council has seven days to ratify that proclamation um in order to to maintain the effectiveness of that proclamation. And so uh we had the perfect opportunity with a city council meeting the next day. And that is the resolution that you have before you. It basically just ratifies the action, the proclamation that Brian took yesterday. Again, making all the necessary findings that will enable the city to receive funding reimbursement for um you know, overtime perhaps and so forth, uh maybe other uh related costs and maybe possibly assistance to folks who have been adversely impacted by the storms. And also will open the door for us to receive other types of assistance from the state as an escort uh in order to address the emergency. So that's what you have before you, and staff is recommending that you uh go ahead and adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Mike, for uh making those additional points, and also just added to that, I know the governor um did submit uh a request for the president, for President Biden to adopt uh an emergency declaration for the state of California, and that has been approved as well. So now that provides, you know, opportunity for us as a city to be able to have different funding sources at the state and federal level to be able to, in case of any damages and for some of the reimbursement, possible reimbursement costs um for our staff. So council, I will open it up if there's any questions or comments on item B dash one. Okay, seen none, I'll take it out to the public. Are there any questions or comments on item B dash one? Okay, seen none, then I'll bring it back to the council for a motion to uh motion on.
Well, I'll go ahead and move the motion to consider an adopt resolution number fifty-nine thirteen ratifying a proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to statewide winter storms and atmospheric river.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. I'll second the motion, so. Councilwoman, did I second the motion? Sorry, I should have, I should have said I'll second, I did. I second the motion, so we have a motion on the floor, so um council members all all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you so much.
It also might be appropriate at this point, you know, you've just adopted this, we we're discussing the emergency situation and emergency conditions in the city. This would also be an appropriate place in the agenda if you wanted to receive a brief report or a status update from any of the uh service providers, the emergency service providers who've been addressing storm issues in the city in the last week or so.
Absolutely, thank you so much. We want to make sure that the council, as well as our residents, are up to date in terms of the work that's being done. So council, if we're okay, we'll go ahead and move for the for a presentation, and then we'll continue with our next item on the agenda. So I will turn it over to, I'll try.
Thank you, Madam here. Uh we in intensity this evening, and we have Chief Lukemba, Chief Lawson, and Public Works Director um Don Wilcox, uh they will give a brief presentation of some of the activities that have been occurring recently and all their wonderful work that they've been doing for the community.
So good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, uh Battalion Chief Jason Lukemba with the fire department here. So I want to give you guys a quick update of where we're at with this weather event we have going on. Um so the upcoming weather event, as of tomorrow, we're supposed to get a partly cloudy, partly sunny. So we're hoping some water is gonna recede, we'll get some drying off of the soil. Friday to Sunday, we're getting the rain again. The forecast as of now is a steady rain, not atmospheric river that we just had, but a steady rain. So uh we're all on high alert, everybody's been monitoring continuously. So the current river status as we sit today. Um we've been working, uh all of us, public works, uh Chief Wass and myself, we're going to the river multiple times throughout the day. Uh P D's going at night every hour. So where we sit today is the water in the Salinas River has risen extensively, but in the past two hours, we've seen a two-foot drop here in Solid Ed. Uh the good news that we're seeing is over in San Ardo and the Bradley Bridge. The water's down approximately twenty plus feet in those areas. So that's good for us. Now, what this water's doing is it's making its way down the drainage. Unfortunately, it is getting into ad fields, and that is subsiding the amount of water that's coming through. So the forecast from O E S, county O E S, is stating we're gonna see a four-foot rise in the narrow river section of that river tonight. We're not seeing that now, but what they're also not accounting for is the amount of debris and soil. All the over, the oats that are down there, so we're not seeing a lot of that. Now, there is a problem to that, and that's the debris that gets built up. So our biggest concern in the city here is that debris that gets backed up. Um we've been going out, we're seeing the steady flow. I'm sure everybody's seeing how wide that river is. Uh we're seeing a steady flow, so we're not seeing any backup. We went down the Meds and Blue Jay area, and what the river's doing is it's breaking out in multiple arteries. And it's a half mile plus wide, so that normal river channel is now half mile plus wide in some areas. So um what we did today for resource activity was we had a Menlo Park Swift Water Task Force come down to Solid Ed. They're always working for O E S, and they came down and did drone footage for us all day. Drone footage from north of Greenfield, all the way up north of Solid Ed. The river's flowing, we have no confirmed backups, the Royal Seco River has slowed tremendously. So we're getting a lot of this water coming through this Salinas River drainage, and it's still making its way down, pardon, sorry, north. It's kind of an odd flow for the river. Uh but we were very fortunate to do that. So with that Swift Water team, we were able to look, P D was using their drone multiple times. And everything's looking good. It is concerning that the water's rising, but we are seeing it to rec- uh recede. So uh resource activity wise, uh Cal Fire with the crews. Uh we bagged over seven thousand bags from the start of this. We've had multiple trucks load, truckloads of sand. And tonight, there's still two truckloads of sand out there with multiple sandbags. All seven thousand bags have been picked up. Um it it's working good. Everybody who needs a sandbag is getting it, that we can tell. Uh the fire department has not received any service calls for flooding or for anybody in distress in the city of Solid Ed nor Mission World. The Royal Seco River going down has helped us tremendously, because there was a concern on day one. Uh Gonzalez Bridge, so as of tonight, the Gonzalez Bridge on River Road is closed. It is not compromised, but it is closed. So for the Mission World District, we will be utilizing for the fire department, we're gonna utilize Monterey Regional to come down. And the Trulark Bridge is currently still open. Public Works is doing some work as we were coming into the meeting, Public Works is working on that too. Unless Chief Lawson, you have something different on the bridges, okay? Um so there was a rumor, and I just want to squash the rumors that Highway one oh one over the Solid Ed River was gonna close at three o'clock today. Then it went from, and these are public agencies calling myself and Chief Lawson and Don asking, have you guys heard this? So there was confirmation on tonight's call, and it's a rumor there is no plan to shut down the one oh one corridor unless something happens, but that's not planned as of tonight. So just for rumor control, Highway one oh one is not shutting down unless something happens. So uh to end this, the good news is the water level south of the city is receding. I confirmed with Greenfield Fire Chief, they're seeing two plus feet recede already. So uh unless there's any questions, that's our update now, unless Chief Lawson or Don have anything left.
Chief, through the chair, if I may?
Yeah, um uh chief, uh I noticed that you mentioned the the river and stuff uh the last time in ninety-five, having to be in the council back then too as well. And the problem we had was coming, not only getting creased by the waste road plant, which now it's it's fixed up and pushed up and rocks are there. We still want paning, now we have that canal running through there, we're putting, you know, sandbags out there back in ninety-five. So the water came rushing this way, and that came into town where there's a bunch of homes over here now. Um is that flowing? Has anybody taken a look at that?
We went over to the stone, Stonewall Canyon area, it is completely flooded. It's hard to tell, and obviously, I wasn't here in ninety-five. But we're not seeing that big flood come back. We did see it this morning, and that's where the big flood came, and that was where a few days ago. We did see that water come back, but we're not seeing that right now. It's not, not near the railroad tracks like it used to be. Uh some of that's done, but the Stonewall Canyon, everything seems to be flowing fairly well.
It's running down.
Yeah.
Flowing, it's not.
That's right, yeah, and the drone video, I wish I could have got it earlier, but it loo- it looks positive for us, because that water is flowing. Now, like I said, the ad fields are being succumb to water. Uh but it's, unfortunately, it's unfortunate for them, but it is produce, preventing some of that high flow. And talking to a lot of people from the ninety-five era, they were saying they're just, it it's not really apples to apples. They're not seeing the same. Uh I guess, there were bridges that were taken down and everything else.
Right.
So with the infrastructure that's been built, and I do want to add on a side note, um we've all been going down to the unhoused community down there, to the personnel. Uh we've tried multiple times, I know, I don't want to speak for P D, but I know they did, tell them they need to leave the area as it was rising, they're still there. Um we've gone down multiple times, multiple times, I've seen P D and a lot of resources bringing multiple items to them, but uh I will say, as far as we know, so far, they're all accounted for. So that's a positive.
Yeah, thank you, chief. Um thank you for, thank you for that report, and yeah, thank you for that. I I know that Chief Wasson's been engaged since last week within shelter population. And obviously, the county's also looking at different resources, and I know that we're able to provide vouchers, the limited amount of vouchers that we had for the hotel vouchers, at least for so- for some, for one. The rest of them didn't want to take it, and so I know that was, that was an issue. What I heard today with count, with Cal O E S was that one of the shelter that they're gonna stand up in Greenfield, they're still working on that, but that's a state shelter. And they're looking at um decreasing some of the impediments, especially for unsheltered population, that they're gonna allow them to bring their pets, because many of them don't want to leave without their pets or without their belongings. So that's, they're working some of that, and hopefully, they'll be able to accommodate for that, um to make sure that they, that they, that they go. Um I also wanted just a comment, last comment on the levee, I know that, I want to say, where's Don, is he here? I can't see him. Yeah, Don, thank you so much. I know, Don, the levee issue was obviously has been, you know, something that was a part of what we were working on for several years ago, and thankfully, I know, I I heard that the, that was um that was completed just a week before the winter storm. So thank God, you know, we, we worked on that. Thank you for your work on that. Thank you for continuing to work with Army Corps of Engineers to make sure that that was done and that we kept pressing on that. So just want to say thank you for for public works and all the work that they did with that as well to make that happen. Yeah. Thank you. So um is there any other comments or questions for chief?
If I may ask real quick, is how many, uh what's population down there by the river? How many people have down there? So we're looking at seven people.
Seven people.
And obviously, all lives matter, no matter seven or twenty-seven, yeah, nonetheless, but that's great that we're reaching out and chief and and uh making contact with those individuals and giving them options, working with the homeless population in the past. And you know, they're setting their weights, and unfortunately, this could be a dangerous situation.
Yeah, I think they've seen us in the last seventy-two hours quite a bit.
Yeah.
Starting to know each other by Friday night, so.
I want to say thank you so much.
Yeah, and they are accounted for, and that's, we did have a call the other night of possibly an issue, but it ended up being a false alarm, which was good. Um but yeah, it's they're accounted for.
Thank you, thank you. Um so let me start this way, and then I'll go down this way to see if there's any more questions for your comments. So uh Councilwoman Cortal.
And yes, uh first of all, I just wanted to thank all our responders. Um I know I personally been been down by by the river. That area, uh I've gone at all times, and there's always somebody there, so thank you so much um for that. Um also, um I want to give thanks also to our public works, of course, the county public works as well, our colleagues. I know, uh I think everyone here has, you know, tried to to help out whichever way we can. But you pretty much touched like the points uh of the questions that I had, my only concern that I have um is I didn't know that there was a lot of um onlookers going, even families with little ones, like little ones. I think they just want to go, you know, take pictures, and and it's really dangerous. I mean, I I didn't even let my dog go out there, and our business is just a few feet um from there. So is there any um like caution tape, cones, barricades, anything we can do or put out something on our social media? Getting people know to please uh don't go out there?
Yeah, I I think we could post something on social media, unfortunately, with it being an open area, and
Yeah.
I I mean, this is unprecedented, and it's. I I mean, this is unprecedented. It's, it's, then when you look at it, especially over that area. Um, it it's pretty remarkable to see that much water. It's, it's absolutely unreal. So. I, we've noticed the same thing, and we keep telling people, but a lot of those people, I know the children are right there in that house right there. So when they get the police and fire. Azuz has come out and everybody, dogs come out and everybody's there. They think, oh, what's the scurry? So they're all kind of interested, but. Yeah, I think we could definitely post something out about the dangers of being near the water.
Yeah, I would appreciate that because yeah, the current, I'm sure you guys have seen it, the current is pretty strong. And yeah, like I said, even my, my head, I wouldn't. I do let her run free and and not today. But just uh, just thank you, everybody. I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chubb.
Um, just a quick question, um, maybe for Don, uh, in regards to. The area that I think, uh, Mayor Pretem, uh, he missed spoke to over out. In the cemetery area, that whole area, uh, Brian Canyon and all that, um. What, what, what work was done in the past on that? And then also. Uh, the other area of concern outside of the Salinas River, which is the largest concern. Uh, up here on off of uh, San Vicente and the, and the Colbert and how small it is and. The mudslides we've had in the past of just the mud coming down. What are we doing to to work? And I know. I kind of have the answers, but I just want to go out so the public kind of hear some of this stuff.
Okay, I can, I can certainly speak to both of those issues plus the treatment plan. So back when the river bill two bit came in, I believe that was the subdivision that had to do improvements on Brian Canyon Channel. Back in the nineties during the floods, uh, that's what I remember, and then it's mentioned. There was a small color pipe or maybe a couple of them. That was taken out in a big box called or pole put in. So Jason and I went and looked at that yesterday. It's working fine. Frank Canyon Channels, another um, delayed response. So it didn't flow, didn't flow. During all the heavy rains and then day before yesterday, it started flowing. But it's pretty light and the new box cord is keeping up well. Uh, the other two, the other major area is what uh, is the Meramonte development now. So there used to be a creek running across just on the other side of the state home walls, Jackamazing Creek. That's kind of. During the drought years filled in, but when we get rain events. The rain likes to go where Jackamazing Creek was, so it's back again. So those flows come down. They sometimes look like they want to. Overtake the berm on the end of West Street. And they have in the past, we have some blocks ready to put there if that happens. Hasn't happened this rain event, but our. Old faithful at the end of San Vicente, that's been blowing on and off for the last few days. So um, Joel and his crews and Paul did make sure that the whole the pipe is clear, but it is clearly too small. When we went to plan review with Meramonte, that needs to be three times that size. And so I was asking Brian, you know, uh, who do we call uh? About having it done. And for the time being, we can call the property owners, but then. After it's the annexation is complete, we'll be calling ourselves. So uh, we already have plans to upside that over by three times. And then that leads us to the treatment plants. So we got a call from County OES, Hydrology, just concerned that the treatment plant. By their calculations, will be inundated with water. Again, the six to seven foot rise that happens under the bridge. Is also about the rise you see at the plant, it will overtake the Army Corps of Engineers letting. Uh, fortunately, we talked some more and uh, came to the conclusion. That the six to seven foot rise to the narrow street of the bridge, once it gets through the bridge, it can widen right out. So we're not going to see that six to seven foot rise because we only have three, you know, preboard on the Army Corps uh. Letting. So we. Still took it to heart that that's their projection. So we. Stood up the Public Works Emergency Group, got everybody out there, backhoes, sandbags. Rocks, uh, subcontract, a great break to be out there until after the two AM. Uh, predicted um, crest from Cal OES. So we're out there in force. Ready to, if there's a hole in the levee, you know, that could always happen. Animals like to dig through dirt. There's no pipe or something we don't know about. So we're out there ready to immediately uh, tackle any regional levy. Because if you don't get it right away, it grows quickly and that is, you know, so. We're out there, they have pizza, they're warm, they have lights, they have everything they need in case there is any problems with that.
Thank you, Don. And just one last, just a real quick comment. Uh, so I just wanted to, just as the rest of the council, just to thank, uh. But I want to thank Brian, I want to thank Michael, our attorney, for stepping up. We were in a kind of weird space where we. You know, don't have a city manager, so we've got an acting city manager. All kinds of things are happening all at the same time while we're having this huge. Uh, storm. So I want to thank you guys specifically. Also, uh, public work staff that have done a tremendous job. Uh, they've done an awesome job across this whole city, um, just keeping everything clean and everything, no flooding. I mean, it's just been amazing. As uh, Chief mentioned, there hasn't been those calls. Uh, because of, I think, the work and the preventative work that's been done for years and years. I want to thank all of you guys. And the first responders for preparing, preparing our city for what we have. So I'm just glad that we're able to do that. I'm glad that we had a warming center. Ready to go in case we needed it. And now we've got the, the Catholic Church that's ready for a site in case that needs to be. Uh, needed for evacuations in other areas or our area. Uh, so just a tremendous job you guys are all doing. Thank you.
And it really helps to have the backer truck that council authorized purchase of to keep those storm drains clean. That piece of equipment is just phenomenal. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember.
Just a quick more uh, comment, well. Probably a little bit longer than a quick, but I want to thank everybody. And I want, I want you guys to know that. Um, when you, when situations like this arise, uh, the city, the, the, the population in our, in our town is. Uh, feeling safe. Um, I have children that are very social conscious. And as soon as it started raining, I started getting calls from them at work. Hey, have you guys do something? What are you guys doing? How about the people that live in the river? How about people that are homeless? And so I, 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 the first, my first reaction was to call. I, I think I sent them a message to Dalian and a message to Mike and so that I can be able to, to bring, bring that information to them. Uh, hopefully, I mean, thankfully, we have a team that works diligently. And we, that popular, we, the citizens, the residents feel really safe. Um, my children and my wife went to the river. I was on my way to, from work. Uh, they saw the people, they saw the conditions, they were bringing some help. And they asked me why they don't leave. And I said, once, when we see them as homeless. And we think that that is not a proper place to live, but they see it as their home. And the only thing that you can think is, if, what would you do if somebody asks you to leave your house? Even people that live in houses, when they said, hey, you have to leave. Many of them don't leave because they, they don't want to leave their pets or they don't want to leave their furniture or whatever. Uh, we have to understand how they feel as well, but I wanted to take a moment to thank everybody. Um, I think that everybody who asked a question, who, who asked for information got that. And, and they know that they can trust in you guys and we trust you. And thank you so much for all your, your work.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, um.
Um, yes, I just have one more uh, question. I'm not sure who, who to direct my question to, so hopefully you guys can help me out, but. Um, I did want to bring something up that I, I feel like instead of breaking information, it was spreading more panic. And that's the uh, emergency alert that we all got on our cell phones. It was from the National Weather Service, and it pretty much was saying like. This is a dan- dangerous and life threatening situation. Do not attempt to travel, blah, blah, blah. That was so broad, like that was more like for the low laying areas, not so much for our town. And I received so many calls, texts, emails, and, and, and so I just wanted to know, how can we go about? Um, you know, as the mu- as the municipal um. Government to, you know, be able to make sure that this doesn't happen or to be able to. You know, make sure that we're giving proper uh, correct information.
So that's the difficult part is that came from the National Weather Service. That wasn't County OES or anything else. And that's the difficult part. Is when they did those alerts, I think every one of us was, were getting pinged yesterday. And there was no rain, there was no rain projected. And, and that's one of those difficult items because you're absolutely right. It's extremely broad. So, um. You know, through, uh, and we've been working a lot with social media, trying to get that message out there and. And that's really when we get to the National Weather Service, we don't really have. We definitely don't want to say to people, oh, disregard that message because we may not know what the outcome of that message is. So that's one of those areas where. We just got to be careful. The National Weather Service is from its own entity. It had nothing to do with County OES. Now, the County OES evacuation warning. Is a different scenario. When that message came out, that's through County OES. So um, and, and we've all been working, it's. It's been extremely impressive. A lot of us, we've been messaging each other two in the morning, three in the morning. Six in the morning, we were here at both four, six yesterday. Everybody's. Wide awake and just, we're always concerned about the city and what's going on and keeping up. So I, the communication's there. It's just in, I'll be honest with you, on the National Weather Service alerts, that's a hard one because they're so broad. And, and it's very hard as a city, city entity to find out. What is that flood actually for? Because they didn't discuss it on our, were, a few of us are on the County OES briefings twice a day. They didn't discuss the National Weather Service alert.
The map that they provided as well, it just showed like, they just highlighted everything. Okay, I wonder if we'd be able to maybe get a contact uh, person, you know, I think that would be important moving forward.
Yeah, I think if we try to get some info from the National Weather Service on how these alerts are broadcasting, we get more detailed info. But as far as I'm aware, it's a county wide, not specific to anybody. And it just peens your phone if you're in the county. Uh, but yeah, we can work on that. We can work on a contact and definitely get, you know, maybe more pinpoint accuracy of what this entails.
Yeah, so, so Council, we're gonna, Chief, you're gonna go ahead and give us the presentation again, so we can.
I addressed that the false information, the false rumors and all that stuff at the OES meeting tonight. And we're gonna try to work on something here because there's been a lot of that going on. Um, and, and I told, we need to figure out some way to stop it, fix it, address it, do something with it because people panic. Um, when they hear stuff and they live on Facebook. I don't know why they live on Facebook.
They do.
But they do.
Get their information from Facebook instead of coming to um, the folks that have the information. That's what we had. Jesus put that out today. The email addresses, the phone numbers to, you know, CHP, Caltrans and things like that to try to stop some of this stuff. So. It, it was a little irritating to us, so we kind of addressed that tonight at OES meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. So let me.
Do you have a, just one little quick. So one thing, I, I know that the one thing that happened, I think, in one alert that came out. And, and I think it got fixed. Relatively fast, I think, from the county, is that the alert came out with two maps. And that was the, that was the thing that I think confused people because the yellow came out, which is the correct one. But there was a red one that came out that had, and I took a screenshot of it, that has a portion of within our city. So, uh, you know, that, that's the alert that came out and it had a piece of our city under evacuation. And these other areas under evacuation. And I think that's when people started calling people, texting people, saying what's going on. And I think that. Is the piece that can be probably fixed.
Well, and some of it was, they, they were putting up both maps, even though they were only using one map because. The other map was just in case if something happened, then that map wasn't becoming the plane. It was like, stop. Just give people the information, stop giving them the potential information that might be happening if something happens. Um, so that, we, we, like I said, we kind of.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you so much. So Chief, just for me, and uh, just to make sure that we reach out to the public, this is a good opportunity to be able to ensure that our public. Understands what is happening. Um, so you know that you are as part of the inactive. Uh, Monterey County Emergency Operations Center, that our cities and, and chief, both our police chief and our fire chief are active. In those calls that are happening on a daily basis, twice in the morning and then also in the afternoon. And this is an opportunity that if they see any concerns or they have any resources that are needed, because there's other representatives also from the Sheriff's Department, from. From State Cal OES, from the weather, um, that they have an opportunity. Uh, our, you know, our representatives have an opportunity to be able to discuss that. And, and if there's any unmet needs. That those are addressed at that time. So just for our public, so they know that even though sometimes we may not be pushing out information, that that's a good thing. Um, because the, you know, just so, so you're assured that they are participating as part of this coordinated effort. And it's actually pretty impressive to be able to see the entire um, E, uh, EOS um, Emergency Operations Center and how it functions. And how it's, you know, twenty four seven, people are staffing it and looking at all of the different details. So I just want our public to know that. Um, to be sure that we have our teams that are part of that and coordinating if there's any resources or anything that we need. That, that we have our representatives to do that. And then just my final on the messaging, because I think this is really important. We've seen it before. And we keep hearing also for um, us to be able as elected officials to make sure that we have a coordinated message and that we're saying. Um, also, you know, um, that we're working collaboratively and that we're uniformed in this message. And one is really, I mean, the key elements here with these atmospheric rivers that are, you know, they're, they're obviously, there's going to be more storms coming. Not as, hopefully not as, um, that are not going to bring some of the damage that we've seen, but one is if you don't have to travel. Then please don't be on the roadways. And if you're going to be on the roadways, make sure that you're, you're not late. Make sure you're not. Um, speeding, because this is where we've seen a lot of these um, deaths that attributed also to the speeding, the floods and the accidents. And then check on your neighbors. We all know that this is a time when sometimes, you know, we, we, we don't know. Um, you know, we're taking care of our families, but also checking on our neighbors and our elderly is going to be really important. Um, and stay informed. So I think it's important to be able to stay informed, but make sure that you're signing up for those alerts that are coming from an official website. And what I found is Monterey County OES has done an excellent job in sending out and coordinated um, those information. And I know Jesus is part of getting those toolkits that they're sending out, so we can have that uniform mess, message as well. Um. And um. Make sure too that rumors, it's what was said to hear, those spread like wildfire, especially on social media. So please. If you're not getting information from an official website, and really I would recommend, that, you know, county, county, um. Monterey County OES is doing an amazing job in pushing out information as quickly as, as things are coming. And so please make sure that it's. Information, if you're going to share it, make sure that you're sharing it from an official website that has accurate information before we start pushing things out.
Yeah, and, and just so the council knows what kind of a group of folks they have working. The first couple of days. We, we weren't even involved in this. We, we, they forgot to put our names on the list of all the meetings and stuff. And everybody here was doing everything they were supposed to be doing on their own without having that resource. And then now the last two days, we, we've been included in all the meetings and stuff. So. Everybody did a stellar job before we were even involved in the OES up there.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, thank you so much for those updates. Do you have?
It, it might be a good time to have Jesus just do a quick update. He's been really critical with sharing information, if that's okay.
Sure. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Council. Um, yes, it, it has definitely been a, a learning experience for, for the, um. At the city. Um, so I think the main thing to know, right, is that when we put our messaging, we really try to frame it in the most calm ways. Possible. Ironically, you know, rumors spread like wildfires, especially in a storm, right? And so we definitely wanted to keep the messaging that. Yes, there's a storm. Yes, it could be dangerous, but Solid Ed. As a city was never in any real danger of flooding, other than the, the sewage treatment plant, right? And so putting out that information in a timely manner was very important. Secondly, the way that um, our city really humanized. The information by putting out videos of public work staff, by putting out, you know, posts of folks explaining what these messaging. Messages were, uh, was very, very key. And so I really want to thank, you know, everybody here, you know, cheese, work. Uh, for, you know, just all the work that they did, but also in walking a lot of the staff through a lot of the information. And that's probably one of the, the main takeaways um, after the storm, right, is how can we sit down? Then all the city, uh, all the city staff in what these uh, alerts mean, right? Difference between. An order and a warning, right? Uh, what are the different agencies? And also just, you know, uh, like I said, may have just been in the same, uh, the same message. Um, a couple of the analytics that I wanted to share with you as well, is it on Facebook? The last seven days alone, we've reached nineteen point seven thousand. Um, and that's just on Facebook. Uh, the city of Solid Ed's Facebook, that doesn't count, you know, PD's Facebook that has a wider reach. Um, it doesn't count our other social media platforms. So. This is, this is going to be the future of communications. Um, we have. This is, this is gonna be the future of communications. Um we have also taken this opportunity, you know, working with Steven at I T. That really up our investment in our app. And so that is also gonna be another formal uh way to communicate with with our public. So all of this is to say that the future of communications is very much digital. But the old school ways of communicating, the humanizing of the information, the way of telling a story in a way that calms people down. It doesn't cause more panic. Though those are still two that we need to invest in. And so I really wanna thank um, you know, the council for the foresight of just having this position. Because honestly, who would have been the P I O if it wasn't for the this department, right? And so, yes, just taking the counsel, thanking everybody on staff uh for for going overtime. And also, you know, uh being on our department has just really been on it. Um she's been us going out there. She's been me, not we're assumed, you know, going out there in the banks um and getting actual footage. Um. Guys, once again, props to to us because other jurisdictions that put up maps, text. We put out videos, we put out photos, we put out things that really help calm the public. So uh with that, I'll leave you. Uh but yes, once again, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesus. I appreciate that.
So I I got a question for us.
Remind us, I know this is really important information, but. Extremely important, uh but I know the 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 opportunity for us to defer some of the other items. So we can allow cheap and the rest of them to be able to to go on to be able to take care of the business that we need. So we can just.
So with that said, thank you, Mayor. Um I know the police department has a drone uh. We personally have one, you know, in the future. I'm thinking that uh if the city or the communications department as well could utilize that. Uh and uh for future instances, especially like events or or something's going on that you're.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, I have I have my own personal drone, but I want to get it to win. You know, for those things, it gets hard for it to come back. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. No, any other final questions before we move on? Okay, thank you so much, Jesus. Okay, thank you so much again. Um so. Uh we're really thankful to all of our first responders and all the public's words, all of our city's team for the tremendous work keeping us safe. So with that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda and which is item B dash two, resolution number five nine one zero. A resolution of the City Council, the City of Solid Ed, authorizing the city manager to use the city in new purchase. Uh exception and executed contract with Spartan Fire L C for the purchase of a twenty point three Spartan Smeal one oh five point aerial apparatus. Ladder truck at a cost of one point seven. Maybe just one point seven million and allocating funding there therefore and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement on behalf of the city of Solid Ed. So I will turn it over to Don.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um myself and Chief, uh Fire Chief, looking back, uh uh teamed up to uh prepare this agenda item. So last fall, we heard the great news that there was a potential for the city to get funding for a ladder truck. He calls it an aerial apparatus. I call it a ladder truck. So uh he'll get more into the technical uh presentation here in a minute. So the city is long. Wanted a a ladder truck so that we could go vertical. Uh the housing shortage, uh just development in general. Hotels uh pretty much are gonna go above two stories. We currently have a limitation of two-story firefighting, so that really wasn't an option. Uh and then last fall, we we heard the uh potential for funding from the state for a ladder truck. And then got the official news on October twenty-sixth, uh State Senator Anna Catalero came down and presented us with the check. So it was a go. Since then, um Chief and I uh started scrambling to figure out, okay, we put together a fire truck. And the process to purchase it. So he put together the spec. Which he'll, um and then the process will be the same as the last fire truck. In twenty seventeen, we had the same opportunity to replace one of our type one fire engines. Um it's a tough thing to put together a spec and competitively bid it. Fortunately, there's companies that do all that process for you. They comply with the state procurement code. And um so we use the same process as we did last time in twenty seventeen. And use the, what was it, same same company, uh Calfire still recommends Spartan or Smeal fire trucks. Uh so we use the. Who was it? H G. H G A C process uh to competitively bid the truck for us in the specifications we want. Offered us a competitive price. It uh met with some of the other uh procurements we saw. And city staff certainly uh recommends approval. And then Jason's gonna go through a couple of slides, telling the benefits of the truck, the capabilities. And um go from there.
In Italian thirty-one. Yes. So this is just real quick, three slides. I, that packet's huge and I'm not gonna get into the technical. Um and we do have our sales manager, Scott Beck, on on the line right now, if uh if anybody has any questions. Okay, so. So what we have here, so this is the truck thirty-seven. It's engine thirty-seven, station thirty-seven is solid ed. This is truck thirty-seven for the city of Solid Ed. So this is a. Basically a mirror of what we're hoping Solid Ed can achieve. This is a hundred five foot aerial quint ladder truck. So it's a ladder truck that carries its own tank of water. It's a duplicate from Fresno County who just received this last month. And it's a duplicate because there's a huge cost savings for us. If we can duplicate one that's already there, they don't need to do the engineering. So this is a considered a dual apparatus, dual-purpose truck. It's first out. It can be first out if the engine was out of service. Or if the crew were out on a vehicle accident on the highway, they take that same apparatus for a fire somewhere else. They don't have to interchange it. They just for the clarification, a true ladder truck wouldn't have a tank on there. No tank of water. It's usually paired up with a fire engine on the larger cities. So um with this hundred five-foot ladder truck, it's a three axle truck, hundred-five-foot ladder. It's a two thousand G P M pump, which is, that's a large, large pump. Um a four hundred eighty gallon water tank, that's a large tank for this, and a twenty gallon foam tank to assist with firefighting. It has a large Cummins diesel engine engine with a Allison transmission. And a big upgrade to this is it has a huge braking system. One for firefighter safety, but a huge component to this is the maintenance costs for something like this. A brake service on something like this could be eight thousand dollars a service. Well, that upgraded braking system. Can go the Fresno County truck, uh their older truck is at twenty thousand miles without brake service. And those maintenance costs, there's a huge cost savings when we do that. Um and then the last slide is what are the benefits of something like this? So this ladder truck would be, it would have a full set of extrication, have airbags, have rescue trucks for any technical rescues on Highway one oh one. It has a ladder, so it's dual purpose is one. It has a ladder that's, like I said, a hundred five foot. One is for rescue on multi-story building if we had to. And the second part is the large aerial operation if we had to. So you know, if if there was a large commercial building that needed that. That uh ladder on that apparatus can be far enough away to still be suffice to suppress that fire. Now, one key aspect, which is a huge benefit to this ladder truck, is the weather. So in solid ed predominantly, we have high winds. Well, there are wind ratings on some of these. And this manufacturer here, it's up to fifty plus miles or a mile an hour rated ladder. And that's phenomenal for a ladder truck. The last thing we wanna do is have a fire and say we can't utilize our resource. Um and it's a, thi- this is a, this is a large truck, but it it provides that expansion for the city. There's, there might be a hundred ten or a hundred fifteen foot ladder truck that they make. But this, this will be, this will suffice the city for many years. And it includes a large expansion for something like this. Um so that's the end of the presentation for the ladder truck unless you guys have any questions. I I will say, if you haven't seen that, cost of one point seven. That includes all the equipment, that includes everything, decals, the paint, the equipment that has to go on there. Those are large items. And and that is the overall cost. So if we could get, you know, a cost that means we will, but that's, that's what they're showing us right now.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. Pretty exciting. I can hear it in your voice. How excited you are.
Excited, yeah. It's great as a, representing the fire department. There's not many fire departments that get this opportunity. I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
And for the way it came down from the Senator's office, this is a huge, huge achievement. I think it's great for the city. Uh like I said, there, this is a red occurrence. I'll tell you that.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. It sure is. So we were glad to be able to get that. And I just wanna say, you know, thank you, Senator Caballero, because that was part of her district earmarks. And as we see now with the governor's proposal, they're like in a twenty-four billion dollar deficit. So we know that many cities are not gonna see this as part of that. So for legislators and for her representing the Salinas Valley and our cities, I just wanna say. Thank you, because it is an amazing opportunity with multiple benefits. Um so let me open it up to the council to see if there's any questions. And then I'll take it out to the public.
I do. I have a question. How about the structure? Because you guys have to build a.
That's the next item on the. So that's the next item on the agenda is talking about the actual app, eh? Apparatus bay.
Any other question?
What what's the the life of this uh truck? Because I know that the trucks, when we have to replace them, so.
Twenty years.
You know.
Yeah.
Twenty years.
Twenty years is the service for an N F P A. We wanna keep the I S O ratings high and and that's, you know, that's the goal, is to get those I S O ratings. So yeah, you're looking at a twenty-year. Will the truck outlast twenty years? Absolutely. But yeah, that's the usual replacement for an apparatus.
Be ready for the next time you come on campus.
Yeah. Yeah, it's usually, it's usually fifteen years for your, or uh yeah, fifteen years for like a reserve or twenty years for reserve. But the ladder truck itself has a little different parameter.
Yeah, awesome, exciting, exciting. Through the chair, I just wanted to say, I'm just as excited and I'm, you know, thankful for uh. Senator Caballero for helping us get this. It's not just, um, you know, good for for solid debt, but it's also good for our neighboring cities. Grateful Gonzalez, I'm sure, uh will be able to have, you know, be able to mutually aid them and and help them out, as I'm sure they would to us as well. I'm just out of curiosity, uh because I have another repair shop, what are the uh, like, just the regular inspection, tire replacements?
It it's all dependent on the use.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's completely dependent on the geography you're in and everything else, you know? Luckily for Solid Ed, we don't have a lot of tight corners. We don't, we're not like the peninsula where there's super tight and their tires are common. So it's really hard to tell because it's a dual-purpose apparatus. It, the ladder truck may not go to every single call. So it's it's really hard to tell. And so the best we can do is compare it to agencies that are running it the same way. And that's, Fresno County is a very close agency that's very much geography-built like this, and it's running the same type of things. They do an either or um apparatus. So it's, it's just opinion. But there are some attributes to this, like the braking system. Um it it is an upgraded feature, but down the road, there's a huge cost savings. I mean, that's, as you know, those, those are highly expensive services. So there are ladder services and maintenance that are done by hours. And that's just part of it. I I don't have the exact numbers of those kinda costs.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I've seen that question because that's significant. Um yeah, so let me take it up to members of the public. If there's any members of our public that want to, that have any comments on item B. Um item B dash two. Okay, and I don't see any here, and I don't see any also on um on our Zoom, correct? Okay, perfect. Um thank you. So just my um final kinda comments on this. Thank you so much, Jason, for getting all this, putting all this together. Um on a quick turnaround time um from when the funds were provided. And again, multiple benefits. I think this is not just, obviously, safety is, it's huge and as our city is growing, I know you expressed those concerns of being able to meet those demands. But also on, you know, multiple be- benefits about the um economic development. It'll allow us also to increase our housing density as well as, you know, land uh mixed-use commercial to be able to develop higher than what we've been restricted for. And I know that was obviously one of the concerns of the Senator and and to be able to ensure that we have as a city, the capacity and the ability to be able to produce more of the commercial and housing that's needed for our growing cities. And I also wanna say that in terms of the safety in the South County cities, King City is also getting one as well. So they also, we see the district earmark from the Senator um for a purchase of a fire truck, but I think those is a lot smaller. So ours is pretty awesome. So we will have that throughout our South County region, which is really good.
And I wanna uh express appreciation for having Calfire to help us specify it. Um we'll do the process, make the recommendations. Uh that's been just great as opposed to if we had to do this all ourselves.
Okay.
One more request is, since this council meeting was extended a week, I believe the price expires tomorrow. So if we can make arrangements for the mayor to sign the resolution at the earliest time, so we can get it sent over, that would help.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it goes up like forty-five hundred dollars.
I'll sign it tonight. Thank you so much. So with that, council, um I'll entertain a motion. And I, you know, for me, it's it's really uh personal. So I I wanna make a motion to be able to approve item B dash two now on our um uh on our agenda for tonight. So can I get a second?
Thank you.
Okay, so council member, we have a first and a second. My council member, Cabrera, all in favor? Say aye. Um any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much again. So we'll move on to item B dash three now on our agenda, and that's resolution number five nine one one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Solid Ed approving task order two. Under an agreement between the City of Solid Ed and and Studio Architect for the Design and Construction Management of the Solid Ed Fire Department Aerial Apparatus Bay Project. And authorized the city manager to execute said task order number two, and I'll turn it over to Don.
Thank you. As uh council member Cabrera mentioned earlier, where are we gonna put this thing? Um it's huge. Uh it won't fit vertically and either of our apparatus bay, even the one we've already extended. So we don't have any choice. We're gonna have to build an external. Unfortunately, uh Senator Cataleros. Funding also included funding for a apparatus bay. We estimate it to be around two hundred thousand, I think. And between the fire truck and the two million dollar grant, we have enough to do that. So the first step, and we believe we have time uh to construct a garage for it. Um if somehow somebody finds a fire truck and says, hey, here's one exactly like what you want sooner, uh we might have to scramble. But we think we have the six to twelve months to construct a garage for it. The first step would be to be site, do site planning, you know, where are we gonna put it? One issue that's gonna come up, one of the locations, then probably is the preference preferable location would displace the old jail out there. So that's something we're gonna have to work through with planning to go through the sequel process and things like that. But again, the first step is to get a uh architect on board to help us design the garage for it. Uh go through the sequel process. The site planning is gonna be difficult. Um if we don't go straight ahead through the jail. You have to go right or left, left would go to the park, right's really not peaceful because that's a one mile an hour zone. And police exiting camera, we do one mile an hour on a coach tree and call. So we've got some things we'll be talking to planning commission and council now as far as site. We're also trying to start the site planning for the municipal complex that will replace the fire station. So we're trying to put all that together. So to start that process, we recommend a task order with the in-studio architecture. They've been doing some work in our community center. They've done project for the city for a long time. They're on our on-call list as the best local, price-wise, everything like that. So we recommend going forward with a task order for in-studio architect to begin design on the. Aerial apparatus bay project.
Thank you, Don. So just a clarification, because we already have an existing contract. They're doing the work over at the community center. So we're just, that we're just adding a task order to their existing contract.
Yes, we have a master contract with them. They went through the R P process on their on-call R P. We're selected as a on-call contractor, and this will be the second thing we're asking them to do.
Okay, um let me take it up to the public to see if there's any questions from the public on item uh which is B dash three on our agenda. On our modified agenda for today, um but item B dash two on the report. Uh are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Okay, see, and then I'll bring it back to council for there, any questions or comments on this item um before we move forward. So. Councilman Corale, you have a question? Or a comment?
Yes. Yeah, uh thank you. Yes, I I do have um some, some comments that I know were kind of good for this meeting uh quicker. But you had mentioned the location of maybe. But you had mentioned the location, uh, maybe tearing down the old, uh, jail. I really, uh, for me personally, I hope that we find another spot. And part of the reason is there is some historical, uh, you know, uh, background to, to the jail. Um, I know also that, uh, it has been restored or they're working on restoring it. I think there's, there was, it was on social media on the PD's page back in March. Uh, the Lions Club gave a, a donation in order to help with the supplies to, uh, to restore it, uh, and whatnot. And also I believe that there is also plans, um, to collab, collaborate with the historical society. And to maybe once, um, spring comes and the farmer's market's on, people can go and view it. And it's real, real nice to look at. I looked at it and, and there is, you know, a lot of, um, historical background. I will go on back into it. It goes back to nineteen thirty-three and I, you know, looked it up and it's just, um, you know, it's part of our history. So I really would love to see a different location for it if possible.
Yeah, thank you for that. But what you're proposing for us today is they're going to present, they're going to provide us with specific different specifications, right? So it's not, that's not.
It's not a done deal.
Not a done deal, just to clarify.
We're just starting the process.
So we'll be presented with different alternatives and options.
Yeah, through a chart to clarify that because that was, I did see that on the report that you guys were wondering if it would be, uh, important or concerned to us. So thank you. That was very clear, by the way.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item from the council? Okay, so seeing London, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number five nine one one.
So move.
So I have a motion on the floor, a second. Okay, in a second, by Councilwoman, um, Goralejo. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, perfect. So we will move on to our next item on our agenda for tonight. And that's, uh, consideration of various appointments to the council and the city committees. And I will turn this over to, um, Brian.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, it is customary at the beginning of each new year to reevaluate, if it reevaluate the list of regional board assignments and city committees where the city council participates. This is an opportunity to ensure that new council members can participate. And if changes to representation are needed or requested, that they can be made at this time. Uh, there's roughly eighteen different committees and boards, uh, that was, uh, provided in the staff report to the council. So the intent tonight is to, uh, determine, uh, which council members will be on which committee. Or board.
Thank you, Brian, for that. And just for the members of the public, so just to be, um, just to provide really quick information. So as council members, um, sitting on this board, not just are we tasked with being here to be able to make decisions, policy decisions, but also part of our, our responsibilities include other, um, jur, other boards and committees that we sit on, um, as well. So for this, what I'd like to do, counsel, is let's go through the council appointments to outside agencies, boards and commissions. And then we can kind of go through that, through that cycle, if you don't mind to make it easier. And then at that time, as we're talking about them, if you have any recommendations or comments, then, um, let's go through them. So, uh, we'll start with the ACAPS, um, board, and that's the Association of California Cities aligned with public safety. Um, and our representative, uh, currently is Mayor Pro Tem Jimenez. And this is the collaboration because we have two, uh, two state prisons. Um, so it's, uh, other, uh, or this organization has other cities and communities that have prisons within their jurisdiction as well. So I'm the alternate and, um, our city managers are liaison. They are meeting semi-annual, uh, monthly, other monthly meetings. So we can add that to this too, as we're going, so that way we can make sure. And during these, if we can, if they're meeting monthly, if we can have the time and date when they meet, so they could be on the.
This is semi.
This is semi-annual winter, summer. That we are, are members of the public have access to that information as well. Okay, so I'm, I'll open it up for discussions. If there is a recommendation to have another representative from the council sit there. Represent the board?
I'd be willing to sit on the caps, uh, it's going through a transition at this point in time. Uh, I think with the history and, and what we're looking to do or possibly not do, or what we're not getting from them. I think it's important to, uh, stay consistent with that. So I'd be willing to stay if, if the council or the mayor so desire.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you for that comment. So I just want to put it out there too for the, for the council in terms of the discussion that we're having. I know continuity, continuity and his, history is really important, but I think also kind of the council to be, this is an opportunity for us to also look at other boards that we may not have, um, have the opportunity to sit there. But we do have, we do have some knowledge or we do want to learn more about, about that as well. And, and I think this is really important in terms of representation to our city as well, because this is an opportunity. So I'm, counsel, uh, if there is any comments, I'm, I'm good with the recommendation or the, uh, you know, to have, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem stay on that seat if anyone else has any discussion or other have a burning desire to be on this, on this board. Okay.
Just, uh, a question is just one person?
It's just one representative from the city council, correct? I think that's in the bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on with that. So council, do we need a, um, so can we do all of these first and then we'll do? Yeah, okay. Okay, so then we got that one and then we'll move on to Ambag. Um, and this is the Association of Monterey Bay Area Government. And right now currently I'm the, uh, representative. And council member Chavez is, um, my, the alternate. And while it's important to have an alternate in case the representative can't be there, then that we do have, the city continues to have representation on these boards. Uh, Community Economic Development Director is a liaison to this. They meet the second Wednesday of every month at six P M. For the past couple of, of, well, this last, at least the last year since, uh, Councilwoman Stewart, um, um, is not on this board. I, I, I sat on this board. I've been sitting on this board now and it's virtual meetings. Um, so I, I do, I, I would like to continue to stay on the board unless one of the council members has a burning desire to be on this. I'm open to that as well. And this is really critical because this is obviously, we've been talking a lot about housing. We've been talking a lot about Vena numbers and what the city needs to comply with and our housing element plan and all of that ties together. Um, so council, I'll open it up for discussion on that one, on that item.
No, Bernie does that on my part.
Okay, so if we're okay with that one, then we'll move on to our next item, which is our citizens advisory committee. And I'm currently the representative, um, and. No, we don't have a citizen representative. Oh, this, so, so let me just go through this. So the police chief, uh, chief Lawson has been here. They've been meeting virtually. But I haven't been attending those meetings in the last year, I think. I haven't been part of that. So, um, would you, do you want to clarify, chief? Are they continuing to meet? Because I'm not getting any emails or correspondence on that. And I know I, I'm sitting, I'm the advisory, I'm part of the advisory committee.
Yes, we've been having.
Okay, so is there a reason why I haven't been attending? Why I haven't been receiving the notices?
If I may help the chief out, uh, who the chair is, uh, appointed by the, the warden. So although we can recommend and, and say, if we actually, that individual here, she, once, are representative. So.
Well, I think what might have happened also is, um, the wardens, there have been so many changes in the wardens. That, um, and, and I know I've seen your name on some of the, the email invites.
Really? Well, I've been missing you. So maybe you're putting it with an S because I have not been getting them on my city email. And I, I'm really good about checking it.
And I reached out that one time when you asked me. I reached out to them to make sure that you were on the list. Um, but like I said, they've had some important changes out there in the last year, year and a half. Um, and I can check to see if, if you've fallen off the list again.
Yeah, I think I am because they haven't been sending me anything.
Like Councilwoman, even I said, they're, they're represented, that representative is appointed by the warden at the prisons. It's not something you, you apply for or whatever. Um, they, there wasn't even the appointment.
Okay, so chief, can we, can we first clarify that? Then if they have bylaws or they have, uh, for this advisory committee or kind of, you know, how the policies of, how that gets appointed and then it can come back to us.
I think I, I think I might have that, that document, that paperwork. And it, it is, it, they're, in their bylaws, um, in the rules, regulations, whatever, it says they do the appointment. It's, it's not something you can, you can ask for or be volunteered for.
Okay, so how can we continue to have this? We've had this since I remember I've been on the council.
I think originally, and just through the chair, I think that when, I think two, two wardens ago, I want to say, they had appointed the previous mayor. And I think he was attending the meetings. And then there was, there's been two shifts in wardens. And since then, I think, I haven't seen their community, I mean, they used to come to our council meetings. The warden was here. Uh, sometimes the other warden would come and their community, I don't, I don't remember the name, name of the title, community relations coordinator, I want to say, something like that.
Community resource manager.
Sorry, community resource manager would come too. And there was that meetings that were happening. Since those two changes in wardenses has occurred, um, they're not here anymore. And I don't see them, uh, engaging as much, at least with us.
And I don't want to continue to blame on the.
No, no.
The COVID thing. Um, but we were, we were doing the meetings virtually, um, during, you know, during the whole COVID. It then, so.
So, so chief, let's do this then, council, if we're okay with this. I mean, I'm going to strike out. The last meeting was twelve twenty twenty because that's not accurate. And if we can just have on the meeting date, location, accurate information on term, in terms of when they're meeting, all of that. And then, um, if we can go back, then I'd like to, I'd like to continue going there, well, continue. I'd like to start going because I haven't been. Um, but if we can get who is the person, and if you want to send it to me, I can just reach out to them directly to make sure they have my contact. Because I think this is a really important, uh, partnership. Because I do remember, um, before they used to come here, they used to provide presentations. And I've seen them hand out checks to King City and to, you know, part of their community relations. And I know they did a lot of work with you as well in terms of, you know, the, the cops getting tree and whatnot. So I think that's really important for us. And they're still involved. So I think this is important for us to be able to foster that. We've had conversations before about the importance of the housing crisis for us, but also for them with a lot of their personnel. And how, um, you know, it's important for us to be able to have opportunities to work together.
Yeah, well, and as long as the sky isn't falling tomorrow, I'll reach out to. I'll reach out and, and let them know that you want to be still connected with it. And like I said, the, the warden, the warden is the one that, that makes the.
Perfect. And do we need an alternate though? Because we have an alternative. I just want to make sure that we're going through this, we're striking that information that's not relevant and it's not accurate.
That part I don't know. I, because I know I'm, I'm always on it and I'm always there, so.
Okay, so we'll put police chief here. So can you, we'll check on the alternate, but, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to continue? Do you want to continue to be an alternate on that? If that's even, uh, thing that they have?
Yeah. Yeah, because the, the communication channels have to open up. And I own with chief has worked with them as well, but there's other things that we're looking for and we know they have resources. Um, and the employment issues and the, the budget situation now with the deficit coming up. In addition to the, the budget, uh, uh, for the prisons themselves, you know, they're reducing at a lot of these facilities. And therefore, it'd be considered ours as well in the future. So we want to be there at the table with them and have access to those.
Absolutely. And whatever happens there impacts us because we do have that contract with them for their wastewater treatment facility and whatnot. So, okay, so anyone, and I, let me open it up for discussion if any members of the council want to.
A burning desire?
A burning desire to.
I would like to have a, expressly burning desire, but, uh, I'm not there yet. Yes, uh, this one, yeah, I would like to participate in that one, if it's possible. Or you want to continue?
Yeah, so it, it's open for discussion. Yeah. I think, I, you know, I still want to continue to be the representative. So do you want to be the representative or the alternate?
Um. Well, the alternate doesn't have much action, right? So I, yeah, uh, in the, in that sense, I want to be able to participate in something that I can learn and that I can, uh, be able to use something. Uh, if, if this continues work that you're going to be doing, I'd rather have you, uh, leave you, uh, in the continuous for continuing. Um, and I, I will take it trying to learn yourself.
Yeah, no, thank you. Um, thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. I'm okay with that. I, uh, you know, chief is going to get us. So I think the important thing for us, and I think we all know, um, especially for newer council members, how important these positions are. Because we are a voice at the table. We are, we do need to address some of the issues that we know as a body that, um, you know, our, our community is challenged with. And how do we really work together in partnership? So, so I'm, I'm okay if you want to, um, represent be the, the community representative. As long as it's okay, because a warden still has to make that appointment, correct?
Right. And, and that's what I was going to say. We can, we can give them a list of names. If all three of you wanted to do it and they would make the appointment. But to be completely honest, this position is, um, it's basically a listen only position. Um, we get to go there and we get to hear everything that's going on at the prisons. We get to, um, interact with them and we get to ask questions and things like that. But we basically do not have a say on anything that goes on there. It's just, it's more of an information sharing. Um, so we know what they're doing. They know what we're doing. If they need help or if we need help, we can, we can interact with them that way. But we do, we do not get, um, a say on anything that goes on there. Right.
Yeah, but what it, what it does do though, it allows us to be present, to be able to hear and also to develop that partnership that we, we know what's going on there. So we can have a better interaction and conversation with the prison about some of.
And, and we get to know who the wardens are, assistant wardens, uh, P I Os and things like that. We get to interact with all, all of those folks. But, but like I said, basically it's a, um, we get there, we share information, they share information. Um, kind of thing. And that's, that's pretty much the extent of our, um, dealings with, with that board.
Okay, so, um.
Mayor, it'd be easier for you. I'll, I'll go ahead and remove my name. Uh, let's go ahead and do that. And, uh, I know many of those guys there already.
Mayor, thank you. I was going to remove my name so that we, if you want to just have, um, the council of recovered it up. Yeah.
Both names and, and they can.
Yeah, well, I think if the body is good, if we can give it, give them, councilor Cabrera, maybe you still want to be there. I can remove myself. Yeah, I will do that. Okay, the council, are we okay with that? Okay, thank you. Um, and so the next one is League of California Cities Monterey Bay Division Executive Committee. Uh, so this is, this is actually a little bit different. So we'll correct that because everybody, all of us, because we're elected officials, we're all part of the California League of Cities. Um, the California League of Cities has policy committees that are part of that, which we don't get to decide as a council. We have to make, we get appointed to those boards. And I, I've been serving on the policy board for some time now, um, on the housing and economic development. So can we just, this one is really not an appointed position? Can we move this just to another area? Yeah. Because we don't decide on this one. Okay. And so the next one is, uh, the Mayor of Monterey County Associate, Mayor's Association. Um, so this one, I, uh, I attend, I'm appointed as a mayor. Uh, but, but I didn't know that we can do an alternate because there was a council, there was a meeting and there was an alternate council member. My understanding from when I asked to go to one of those meetings, I, they said, no, you can't. But maybe I was going to alternate. So, um, so for these, typically it's the mayors that meet on the first Friday of the month. And for the past several years, it's been, for the past years, it's been virtual. But they are going to start doing, uh, we did have our first meeting last Friday and it was in Salinas. So it does rotate throughout the twelve different cities. Let's see throughout the four, twelve different cities in Monterey County. So I would like to appoint an alternate because in the event that I can't be there and there's going to be a discussion. I think it's important that we have a representative from Solidad at the table. So I'll open up this up for, um, you know, nominations or recommendations, or if somebody says, hey, I want to be there.
My recommendation would be that the Mayor Pro Tem, it just kind of seems like it would make sense for the Mayor Pro Tem. Whoever it is, so that if it's rotating every year, it just kind of makes sense that that's the alternative.
That sounds good. Yeah, I saw council members. So we think, okay, um, yeah, that's a perfect, makes perfect sense to me.
If the Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay.
Oh, man.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Um. And that will change. So meetings, we can strike the meetings. Will we have virtually? Because they will be held in person now. Okay, and M S T Monterey Salinas Transit District, uh, we. Okay, and MST Monterey Salinas Transit District, uh, we do, this is part of the JPA that we have with, um. The, the MST, and I'm the representative, and I would, I would ask the council to consider, uh, having me. Continue to represent this, be, I am the chair this year, just to finish off my chair, and then. I would be open to having another representative, cause I think this is really important, public transit. And there's been a lot of work on the comprehensive operational analysis to really, uh, change the way that we. Provide, uh, transit, especially in our South County city, so, um, that has been really significant. Um, we don't have an alternate there, but I do wanna make sure that we appoint an alternate. So I'll open it up to the discussion from the council on this item.
I would like to always open my.
To be an alternate?
Yes.
Council, any comments? We're good. Okay, so then we'll, um, Councilmember, cover it up. Okay, then we'll move on to Salinas Valley Side Waste Authority, and, um. Mayor Pro Tem Jimenez has been the representatives for, uh, for our city. We don't have an alternate, so we'll. If, um, we'll open up to discussions that Mayor Pro Tem is willing to continue to serve, unless anyone else wants to serve on this board, I'll open it up for discussion.
Anyone else wants to, I, I don't have a problem continuing, uh, we meet in Zollus, um, you know, every Thursday, or every Thursday of the month. Uh, an alternate would be helpful. And so, I think, uh, sure.
Okay, so, um. You have to get all my Cs correct. Okay, so then, remember, I may pretend you, you'll stay on there as our representative, and then we'll have an alternate. And I think that's really important, because we wanna make sure that those meetings, if you're not able to be there, that the art, uh, alternate are, they are there. That's really critical. Okay, and then the other one is our TANZI, uh, Transportation Agency of Monterey County. Um, Councilmember Chavez has been on this board for a long time. Um, and I'm his alternate on this, um, item, so, uh, gonna open it up for.
I'd, I'd like to continue on that one if we can, and I would be ready to move on, move off of it next year with, without hesitation.
Okay, so, um, any discussion on this one? Okay, yeah, so let's do that, then we'll continue that for one more year, and then we'll take a look at this again next year. Okay, so, um, alternate, does anybody else want to?
The alternate on that?
An option, I'm, I'm currently the alternate on. On it, and I know Councilmember Chavez does a great job of attending all the meetings, but I do wanna make sure that if you're not gonna attend one of these meetings, that you let your alternate know. Because we do need representation. Anyone?
Anybody?
Anybody?
Do you wanna continue, or is, is it open? I, I, I would like to be there.
So I'm good with that, so we'll do, uh, Councilmember Gavirina as the alternate, and then, um. Councilmember Chavez stays as the representative for another year.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, our, our next board is the Monterey Bay Area Pollution Control District, and I don't think we, does anybody attend those? No. The city manager, but not like, uh, from the council, right?
I think it, it used to be that there was the mayor, I think there was an alternate. I think there was a rotating, I think a mayor was rotating at some point, but I, I don't, I don't recall if that changed or what happened. Cause I, I, I'm not sure how they were appointed, but I know that the previous mayor, Mayor Ledesma was on it.
So these are appointed then by the City Selection Committee?
That's probably what it was.
Okay, so can we just add that there, darling, so that way we know, we don't make the appointments, they're appointed by the City Selection Committee? Um. And I. Yeah, and then we just made those appointments on Friday, so I'll get that information, so we can add it here, cause it's not us, but it's some of the peninsula cities that are appointed to that. Okay, so the next one is the Central Coast Community Energy. So we just did the appointments by the city se- selection committee on Friday, and I'm gonna take my name off of there. Because under our JPA, we have a rotating with our three cities, and so for this rotating, um, um. I now, it's the city of Gonzalez, that their mayor, Mayor Vios is going to be, um, the representative under our JPA. Okay, and then, uh, these are standing committees and just advisory committees, so these are more of the appointed committees. Um, on these, I, I, you know, we have Park and Recreation, and we, we don't do, are we? Have you guys met? I mean, there's, I think we had talked when Brent was here, and we can hold off on these, council, if we wanna come back to these. Because you know what? I know that we're working on, did we need this or not? Because we have the Measure Y Committee, now we have the Measure S Committee. So I think on the, um, Measure Y Committee, I think we've done already representatives here, right? So I'll just give this one for now, if you guys are okay with that, the Park and Recreation Committee, we'll come back once we have, you know, more level process. Okay, and so on the next one, the Measure Y Committee and the Measure S Committee, I thought we had gone through those appointment processes already. Yeah, so I don't know why the, the last, I think that I had to appoint, I appointed Christopher, and I think everybody else had made their appointments already. Right?
I'll have to check on that in the morning.
Okay.
But the only ones that I had, uh, down for Measure Y was Mr. Burke. And this Mr. Almores, but then Mr. Burke moved to the school board, so he's off of the. So I don't know of anybody else, I'll have to.
Yeah, cause I think we made those appointments several months ago. Yeah, okay. And then I think on Measure S as well, um, I, I know there was an animal service representative that was on there, as well, can you check on there? And if it's not, then we can, we can come back for that. Okay, and so this was like, I think, I like the portion that we go out to do an application and interest and all that, and then we come, bring it back for recommendation. Yeah, as if we could look at that. And then on the next one, the Standing Committee, these are advisory committees, so we don't have to go through this, right? Um, let me pass, bypass that, uh, cause we made some of those appointments already. Thank you for providing the background on it. Lays on appointments to outside local organizations. Um, so we have the Solidad Historical Society and the Solidad Mission Chamber of Commerce. I know before, at least on the, make, uh, Mission Chamber of Commerce. Um. I, I had been attending some of those meetings at some point, and there was some rotation on that, so I don't know if that's even, uh, I mean, those issues with that. So I think we should, don't, if we can come back to that, Council, we're good to leave it, you know?
The Historical Society, uh, staff, uh, we attend those monthly meetings, we had a meeting today with them, uh. They'll be coming to the council with their annual, uh, year review too.
So, uh, do we need to appoint somebody to that, or are we?
It's, it's up to the council.
So we traditionally have it, right? I mean, we haven't done, we don't have a process or a process for appointing recommendations for being on, on this committee.
If the council desired to, you, you could appoint someone to, to come to the Historical Society and, uh, come to the meetings. Taken to the chair is, uh, the reason we had the economic director, or, uh, director attend those meetings, is because we didn't appoint anybody from the council. So it is our option to have somebody appointed, if we so desire. If not, we continue the current process we have, or representation.
Okay, and we don't have anything in writing in terms of these, huh? It's because they're just, uh, they are segments, I think, I just, they're not standing committees or any of that. Okay, well, since it's not, not, I mean, it's, we can appoint someone if anyone is open to, um, being appointed to this. Serving on the, or, or going to the meetings, right? So it's really just, uh, attending meetings.
This would be the second Wednesday of the month at ten AM, lasts for about an hour.
Okay, so we can put that information there, second Wednesday of the month, so council, anyone, um, want to, uh, be part of the appointments? Okay, well, I don't hear anyone, um. So we can leave it the way it is, and then we can come back to it, council, though. We don't have to appoint it right now, we can always come back. I think the other thing, um. The, that was this, on that one, okay, so the ad hoc committee is, um, let's move on to that one. I know I had, I've been on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee Committee, um, and there. So on these, I know we usually execute, we usually bring them when it's needed, right? And then we kinda make those recommendations as the council, like, who wants to sit on the ad hoc committee, because it typically is related to one project or not. And I know we had discussed, Brian, that that pro- that process is gonna change. I mean, we can still do recommendations, but just, you know. Um, trying to be more vigilant about how we, what those purposes and goals are for those head, uh, ad hocs.
Yeah, uh, the, the ad hoc, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, uh, could have items come this year. Uh, regarding portable housing projects, such as Miramonte, uh, some other projects that are, uh, potentially coming to the community. So, uh, we definitely wanna be able to have that committee ready, so when, when an affordable housing proposal comes, and we can schedule those meetings, so.
Okay, so, I know, I, I, I've been part of that for the last couple of years, so I'd like to stay on that. And then there's another representative, I know, uh, Councilwoman Starbridge was part of that as well. So if somebody wants to recommend to be part.
Is there only, cause I also.
Yeah, we have to just have two.
And you'll be part of that process, so.
Okay, so we'll have it, council is okay with that? Um, with, uh. Having the, not all, the, um, the two, the two appointments for Councilwoman. So then we'll move on to the, um, so this is the Ad Hoc Recreation Subcommittee, and this is really. I know there's bylaws here, and through some of the bylaws that exist, the, how the. City gets to make some of these recommendations, and I believe that the mayor gets to make an appointment to this body. Um, and they've got, they, they have their separate process, but I think the bylaws do dictate that we have, the mayor has the, uh. The, the, the mayor does, makes appointment, correct?
For the Ad Hoc Recreation Subcommittee?
Yes.
So. Recreation Manager, Senior Manager.
Oh, no, sorry. Yeah, this was separate, sorry. Yeah, so this is the rec district, so I wanna, I wanna add that here, cause I don't think we have it. And I know we have the, our, the city, the ma- make, we make an appointment recommendation, so that's not here. And I didn't know that, that existed, it is in their bylaws, so if we can make sure that that gets on this, on, on this sheet as well.
The ad hoc.
It wouldn't be on that.
No, it wouldn't be on ad hoc, because that's an appointment.
That's an appointment.
It's an appointment.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So it'd be on the council appointments too, um, council appointments.
And so that would be another, we would do like a recruitment for community members?
So this, so this, and they have the bylaws, so we can look at, yeah, because it's based on their, you know, their process, so.
They do a city ref, there's a city recommendation or appointment, and then there's a county appointment as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, city appoints.
Oh, you weren't, yeah, so we appointed, I know that hasn't come through us, but if you can put it there, so it comes through us, please. Okay, so this is the Ad Hoc Recreation Committee, so this is what, uh, Councilman Chavez and I have been part of, working, um. We haven't met for a while, but it was when we were trying to work together.
Yeah.
Um, so, we can, um, I, I think we're, we're okay, you're okay with staying on there, yeah?
Yeah, li- like similar to the, uh, the other housing one, I mean, both intend to go on, assemble with that ad hoc committees when they.
Yeah.
Then do it in the future and say, no.
Okay.
Okay. I'm good with that, if the council's good with that? Okay, it's perfect. Um, and then the Teacher Housing Subcommittee, the, kind of in the same spirit, to be able to do that, okay? Sounds good, so right now we'll keep the appointed that, and then we'll come back to look at it when it's new, and the Planning Commission. We don't, we don't make these appointments.
That'll be coming to the council at the next, uh, council meeting, uh, we have three applicants, and, uh, will be. Coming to the councils, uh, Andre and Oriana and the department did a great job with recruiting, putting the word out there on Facebook. At a workshop too, on Zoom last week, so, uh, they did a really wonderful job, and we look forward to bringing those candidates for you.
Okay, perfect. Um, so, council then, if we're, this is, then we're done with this portion of the agenda, so there is no. And we already took action on it, so we can move on?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, yeah. I know, I was trying to go as quick as I can, uh, our next item, then our last item for today's agenda is item, uh, B dash five now. Which is Resolution fifty-nine twelve, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Solidad approving an appointment agreement between the City of Solidad and the side, and new attempt. But, and then J Edward Toos for appointment as interim city manager, and I think I got the last name, right? Did I say it right? Okay, perfect, and then I will turn this over to our, to Brian.
Uh, Mike, would, is this an item that you would be?
Yes, yes, I'll be happy, and I, I promise I'll keep it, uh, short. So with the departure of City Manager, uh, Brent Slama, and the initiation of a recruitment process. The council, excuse me, the council needs to retain a interim city manager to bridge the gap between the time that Brent departed. And the time that, uh, we, uh, hire a new city manager. So, uh, we, the council looked at a number of options and decided to go with a referral that we received from our recruiter, uh, Coff and Associates. To, uh, Edward. Now, see, I wanna make sure I'm not saying it incorrectly either. Edward, I heard it was Tweez, but I, I'll be happy to be corrected if that is not the case. But in any event, uh, to Edward Tweez, who is a retired Calpers Newitant. Um, Mr. Tweez has a wealth of experience as a, uh, both a city manager for Clovis, Modesto, and Morgan Hill. And then interim city manager and administrator for Gilroy, Guadalupe, and San Luis, uh, San Juan Batista. So a- about forty years of experience, uh, as a city manager, um, or, or a, a like position. Um, we, uh, he also has a lot of patience, because he sat through this whole meeting as the last item, so, um. I, uh, he, the, uh, hi- hi- his resume is attached to the staff report, and, uh, I think that, uh, it has been. Uh, reviewed and fully vetted by the council, and the council desires to move forward. You have before you an agreement that's been prepared in accordance with the, uh, the law, that dictates quite a few of the provisions for the, uh, contracts. For, uh, retired Calpers Newitants, we have to be careful that we don't, uh, work him too many hours, and there's a, a specific provision that dictates. How much we have to pay him per hour and so forth, but in any event, we have worked through the terms of that agreement and gone back and forth on a couple of items. And have settled on the agreement that's before you, um, and so if the council is ready to consider the adoption of the agreement. We will have, uh, Mr. Tweez on board, uh, as soon as the agreement is signed. Um, I also just wanted to give a special thanks to, uh, Brian, who, uh, uh, volunteered, I should say, maybe was, uh. Was commandeered into, uh, being the acting city manager in between the time that Brent left and the time that we were able to get to this agreement. He just happened to take on those responsibilities, not during some sleepy, slow summer month, but during a major state emergency. So, special thanks to him for overseeing, uh, operations during the last two weeks.
Yeah, tha- thank, thank you for that, Mike, so let me open it up, let me take it up to the public first, if there's any comments from our public on item B dash five. I see no one on our, uh, Zoom and no one here, so I will bring it back to council if there's any comments or, uh, motions to move forward.
Just, just one quick question, uh, under, um, item, I think it was under item three. Uh, B, under the work schedule and the nine hundred sixty hour limitation, um. I'm just trying to understand, I know that, you know, most city managers are at-will workers, and they are exempt workers, and so they work. Sometimes beyond forty hours, but there's a, a, an item there where it says that, because it's, the position is temporary, hourly assignment should not exceed forty hours. So I was just trying to comprehend that a little better.
Um, yeah, so the, the forty hours limitation is that he would be due overtime, if he works more than forty hours per week. Because of the, the way that the, uh, the Calpers requirements are set forth. So he's an hourly employee, unlike some of the other employees that we've retained. And then we have a cap on the number of hours he can work per week.
Got it, so I was just trying to understand, that was the only piece of the whole puzzle that I was trying to understand, I was gonna call you, ask you, but I forgot.
Got you.
They all work executive hours.
Uh, to the chair, uh, Mike, uh, with the retired newtins, with.
Through the chair, uh, Mike, uh, with the retired newtons with the state of California, it's, it's a little bit different, though, with, uh, the total amount of hours being not to exceed nine hundred and sixty, correct?
That is correct, yeah, that's built into the agreement.
So therefore, why would, uh, under that, why would that trigger overtime if, if, uh, he worked a sixty hour week that week, or?
Because, because he's an hourly employee, he's not, he's not, we don't have a, a set salary for him. And so he's like other hourly employees, that if they work over forty hours per week, then they receive overtime.
And, and that's because of the perks?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, uh, yeah, this is, this, we entered into a very similar contract when, uh, we hired a, uh, previous retired newitant. If you remember, Carlos Lopez, we hired him on to do some work for us, after he'd retired from years and years of work with the City of Gonzalez.
Yeah, through my, through the chair again, uh, through my experience, uh, I've hired many retired newtons through the department, and they worked with us, and we worked that. Those hours, nine hundred and sixty, uh, that timeframe itself, there, nothing seemed to, it didn't trigger any, uh. There was no. So, I guess, we have to stay with that as our, our lawyer recommends.
Yes, thank you, uh, okay, any other questions? Okay, so if we have no other questions, we wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you, so if we can welcome, and if we wanna say a few, a few words, so our community can get to know.
The council staff has asked me to make quite a long presentation. But, uh, I enjoyed, uh, I, over the past couple of days, I had the opportunity to meet with, uh, your staff virtually in person, to view the hotspots in the community today. Uh, looking forward to, uh, working with you and the staff, they've been gracious and professional. And, uh, I, as Mike mentioned, I have experience as an interim city manager, which is a different kind of skill set. Being the city manager, in both, and I know it's an important transition for you, and I look forward to working with you in that. Incredibly into my comments, so I should say, however, that my name is spelled oddly, T E W E S, but pronounced Tweez. In doing some historic research, I found that there is a, uh, there was a family here in Solidad named Tevis. And I'm sure that, uh, since I'm German, but my family's German, we're related in some fashion, cuz there aren't a whole lot of them even in Germany. Grandfather came over, uh, in the early nineteen hundreds, and found the one guy, dyslexic, uh, immigration officer in Los.
Thank you, thank you for that. Well, welcome, we're looking forward to having you, um, continue to lead our city and to be able to get us through this time, uh, hiring a city manager, thank you so much.
Uh, I know, I'm, you have a staff, we're really looking forward to working with you, sweetest, and having you on the team, so, thank you.
Thank you, um, so, council, with that, uh, before we, before we adjourn, there's no other items of business. But I would like to adjourn in memory of Noelia Chapa, who was a former, former Sol- Solidad City Manager, who passed away in December. Uh, this year, so our condolences to her and her family, and so we'll end our meeting, um, adjourning in her memory. Thank you, and if there's no other items of business, then I adjourn this meeting at eight fifty-three.